Everybody got greamed up?
Counsel, any agenda or consent items that you would like to talk about from the agenda for meeting tonight? No, no, no? Okay.
It's good since there's no consent.
I know.
Any counsel or concerns you would like to bring up? No concerns, Mr. West? Concerns?
No concerns.
No concerns, all right. Why don't we move directly then into our scheduled work session items if we could, starting with the Public Works Complex Update.
Ms. Kerber.
Hi, I'm Delora Kerber, Public Works Director, and with me is...
Sid Scott, Principal of Scott Edwards Architecture, and Andy Kraus with Scott Edwards.
Hey.
Are you guys' mics on, Delora?
Yes.
Can you pull that one closer to them?
Yeah, you're not so close.
There you go.
So here we go, we're gonna do this one. All right, so we are here tonight to talk about the Public Works Facility Master Plan. And, whoops, why is it here? I think I just hit. I'm just gonna do this. There we go. So back in 2015, the city endeavored to do a facility-wide master plan throughout the whole city. The number-one result of that was that the police need to move into a larger space. Looked at several different options, the determination was to leave the police in the building that they currently are in, which is across the street, to keep them in the city core. In order for that to happen, the City of Will... or the Public Works Department need to move elsewhere. We then proceeded to look around for some parcels, and we bought seven acres just north of the Smart Fleet Facility there off of Boeburg. And the next step was for us to start looking at a master plan of the property and determine how big an area we needed and what our property site might look like. And so tonight is bringing you up to state... up to speed on what's happening here. We are literally right now all over the map. We have... we are currently across the street, but as you can see, we are Two's Barns, Ellison Reserve, Memorial Maintenance Barn, we are spread out all over the city. And here's just kind of some of our facilities of how we're a little overwhelmed, crushed through, what it looks like. And then also let you see, the police is also our... their facilities are definitely substandard. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Andy and Sid.
So we've spent a number of months looking at the existing conditions. We began with a site assessment that looked at all of the various facilities of Public Works and tried to draw a conclusion as to square footage requirements, et cetera. We also looked at alternate facilities, similar facilities in Lake Oswego, Hillsborough, and Cornelius. What amenities do they have? What can we learn from that experience, et cetera? We held a sustainability workshop in which we considered Green Globes and LEED certification. In the end, we sort of concluded that we may want to do a unique sustainability process for this project. We did a program analysis and a space analysis to assess what requirements that there are in regard to both the site as well as the buildings that would be on that site.
Okay, so we've got three options that we brought tonight to just run through with you. So this is Boeburg for orientation purposes. The Smart Facility is over here. The site itself has... there's a zoning area in here that is basically green space that we're not using to build on. There are setbacks that go around the property, along with some utility easements that go around the property as well. So basically, we've got setbacks all the way around. There is this service drive that goes into Old Castle that is on the property as well. And the site drops about 20 feet across the site this way. So that's one of the things we really looked at, is how we can orient the buildings and maximize the grading and basically create the least amount of cut-and-fill on the site. So the organization of the site, which is really the same for all the options we're looking at, is we want to create a public access to the project. So in this case, we've got public parking up here, admin building here where public has access to it. Then the rest of the site is fenced, and there are gates here and then up here. And the idea here is that we've got staff parking behind the gate, which is... which is really a big deal in Public Works facilities. We also want to separate the cars from all of the service vehicles that Public Works has. So this... this would become a staff entry down here, and then we have an entry here to the yard where the large trucks would come in. So that gives them full access to the backside. So we've got an admin building in front, right off the street. We've got connection then that goes out to a warehouse, storage, and shop building. This is a nine-bay building here. And then the service yard, including two wash bays here for vehicle wash, de-cant facility here, which is like a dewatering facility where they dump the street sweepings and let the water be removed so that it's much... costs much less to get rid of when it's lightweight. And then also, storage bins along the backside for outdoor materials, and then parking for vehicles. So it's... it's really a wonderful site. We've actually got room for future expansion and for all of the areas of the site. The way that we've looked at it from a grading standpoint is this is a three-tiered approach. So we've... we have kind of an upper plateau here, we have a plateau here, and then a plateau down here, and that requires retaining walls to separate that. So for instance, coming from the warehouse into the admin building, there are ramps and stairs that would take you up to this building here. And the building is still about four feet below the road, or four or five feet below the road, so it's down in the... as the slope starts to go down, the building is lower than the road.
But then we looked at the next one.
We got more options.
So the warehouse, storage, shop, are those drive-through bays?
Correct.
So they go all the way through the building?
That's right. So the idea with this is that the warehouse space would be towards the front, so loading areas, that kind of thing. And then the rest of these bays, part of it is enclosed, the end of the building down here is actually just a roof where there's no walls, so you know, it's for storage, exterior storage. But in all cases, really looking at the idea of being able to drive through and be able to access the building from both sides.
Yes, sir. Are any of the buildings existing in any of the...
No.
This is like a... and is this that property where community sharing is right next to Smart, am I understanding? Is that...
North of Smart, or the parcel north of Smart.
Okay.
Just south of the access to... I'm trying to think, there's a temporary hire company?
Okay.
That sits in the property just north.
Yeah, I got you.
And then another feature here is actually creating a bridge over to the Smart Facility.
Since we have the second highest number of vehicles that Smart or Fleet maintains, we thought that that would be a handy feature.
Let me go to the next one.
Does the Old Castle drive an easement that they have? You're looking at taking public access off a private easement drive, or what?
Yes. Yes, so we also have easement rights for that road as well.
Second option we were looking at, and this relates to grading, was again keeping the admin building and the public parking up here, turning the warehouse, storage shop, and this allowed us to create two plateaus instead of three. So there'd be retaining walls along here and... or actually in this area, and then the warehouse and the admin, there would be a smaller amount of stairs and ramps basically to get there. But it's very similar in terms of the configuration.
Though I have to say, this one wasn't... didn't have as good a flow to the site, and it took away our ability to put some solar panels on the warehouse and storage since now it's oriented as north-south instead of east-west.
Right.
Expansion area?
And this one has some expansion area, but less than the other ones.
Correct.
The other version was more efficient in terms of allowing expansion area for the warehouse and storage and shop building.
So then we came up with...
Third option, which is... it's similar to the first one, but what we looked at here is actually doing a two-story building to the front, again providing that ability for future expansion. So the idea with this one is that the admin building is actually up higher, we'd have a basement underneath it, which would allow some parking under there, but also put a lot of the stuff that is directly connected to the warehouse down there, like the locker rooms and showers and all those kinds of things. So all of the...
You can say dirty.
I was gonna try to come up with a different word, but it was basically keeping the dirt out of the upstairs. And that's the concept there. The other thing that is pretty nice about this one is that it pushes the admin building up so it has more presence from Boeburg. So instead of being down in a hole, it actually would be up and right at the street level. So actually, pretty similar, but the nice thing here is that this would be level, so no ramps or stairs between the warehouse, storage, and shop building. You'd come into the lower level, that's again would reveal all the lockers and that sort of stuff is, and then go upstairs for all of the crew rooms and offices and that sort of thing.
And this particular layout, it afforded us an opportunity to create a larger conference area. We had heard from the Facility Project Team within the city that it would be nice to have a gathering place that other people from the city could use, and so with this scenario with two stories, we could accommodate that. A room that's even would be bigger than this one, be used by others in the city. Or an EOC, also.
Okay, so those are the site options. Any questions there?
Counsel, questions? Counsel Raco.
So we're looking at, you know, I don't know, more simplistic drawings of buildings, but do we have any sense of cost between the different options?
Not right now.
Okay.
That is going to be our next step.
Yeah.
So we're trying to kind of hone in on the layout and the materials to be used as well as the structure. And then once we have that, we'll do some estimating to be able to determine what the cost of various options are, and then look at a financing plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now we're just...
Because it seems like the final option that was presented had some clear advantages, but I was curious, you know, how that all weighs in the mix.
Right.
So our intent is to take it from here and based on feedback tonight, go into the cost estimating phase and see what it really... how it does affect the overall cost of the project.
Counsel West?
Do you guys have a ranking of preferability? You're using it. It's a facility that, for your department, do you guys... for usability and preference, do you have a...
So our preference would be the third option.
Okay.
Because it gives us more flexibility for future growth, and it just makes it a lot better where the warehouse and the activities where they come into the drying room, the locker room and all, is all on one level. And then they take the stairs or elevator to get to the administrative area. And then also, the... I would still give access to the public onto the main area. We would... that was one of the things that we're looking at, is a small conference room that could be used by the public.
Are any of those options easier to do and be LEED certified and to be more eco-friendly? Any of those ways that we're building, does any of those layouts lend itself to be more environmentally friendly than any of the others?
Well, I believe either the options where the warehouse is oriented lengthwise from east to west is the better option because we'd be able to put larger solar panels on those.
I'd say the other one, too, is with the third option, we potentially can make the footprint smaller for the building, and I think environmentally, that's appropriate.
That's usage, yeah.
Yeah, and it does give you for future, more potential for growth down the road.
I was wondering about the size of the space and the utilization of that space. I mean, it's a sizable parcel that we acquired to try to bring all these operations under one site instead of scattered all over. It looked like there's a lot of yard around that central building, especially on the east-west one. And yet you showed only expansion to the west. Is all that space to the north and the south effectively being utilized in that scenario? I mean, the space to the south is easily as big as the building itself. The space to the north, other than the wash, is likewise.
Well, it does give us opportunity in a site like this where you see the gray space, is that we could park vehicles, we could have, you know, Conex boxes, there's more flexibility. Say we got rid of the staff parking underneath the building, we could put parking on various areas against the warehouse where there's not pull-through slots. So I believe this site would give us a lot of flexibility.
The other... so the other piece I'm asking is, is the area under roof adequate for both the immediate future and the longer-term future?
Right.
Yes, we are looking at least 20 years out plus. So the 20 years is the peach color, and then beyond that is the dashed area.
And the other thing I would just mention, we did turning radius studies for all of their vehicles out there, and it does take quite a bit of space, but there is more... and that, I think, is a great thing about the site, is that there is more room to add more buildings in the future if whatever need arises.
And so if we're thinking that, is the initial building located to most effectively preserve that future option for additional building if it becomes necessary? It seems like we're kind of right in the middle.
Right in the middle, yeah.
As opposed to offset in some way that might allow more future space?
No, I think that's fair to look at.
Has that been talked about?
You slip to the south.
To some extent, to the south, for example, this configuration lends itself to building a new building up against the greenway there. So then maneuvering areas between the two buildings. So this configuration actually maximizes your flexibility in the future.
So what Andy's saying is...
As long as it's been weighed and...
Yeah.
Thought into the process, yeah.
So our thought was to build down here for whatever it might be in the future, and that still allows enough room for all the maneuverability you need to be able to back into the doors and for maneuverability on the site there. That's a great question, though, because it does look like you're smack in the right in the middle.
Okay.
Okay, and we've just got a few things to show you here in terms of building forms. So we're looking at various ways to build the project. This gives you an over... kind of an overview of the project. The admin building here, Boeburg Road out here, there's the warehouse building. So we looked at an idea of using gable forms for the building, also a shed roof. You can see how that... and this actually works beautifully for solar panels on the warehouse building. And then the third option was a parapet building, which... where you would have a shallow pitched roof, but you'd have a... the walls would come up and create like a parapet screened area on top.
So...
And then...
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out over here, a couple views. This was doing it as a single-story building, and this view is looking from over here back at the building. So there's a single story, and there's that two-story option we were talking about with the connection to the warehouse here, and then the public entry here, and then parking underneath here.
So of the three options, when we looked at this, this one lends itself to be the most functional and the most safe option for us. So when staff has to work on a roof, if it's a gabled or a shed, they have to tie off. If your parapet wall is high enough, they don't need to do that. And it's also a great way to hire... I'm sorry, hide your HVAC systems and all that are going up on the roof. All right?
Counsel West?
Do we have any... my first thought when I saw this design over the one that looked a little more northwest feel, that roof tends to lend itself probably to durability, am I guessing, or time the watershed to come off of it, to where a flat roof reminded me more of something in a drier climate with less precipitation than we deal with here in the Northwest? And I don't know, maybe I... and I'm not a builder by any means, and I'm not an architect, so is that potentially a concern with maintenance with it being a flat roof in as what region that we're in?
No, I mean, like, City Hall is a flat roof with a parapet.
Is that the same?
And so it's just a matter of making sure that you're sizing your downspouts accordingly to make sure that you don't gather any water on it. Like I said, my... our concern here is if to do anything on it, you need to make sure you have tie-offs when you get up on the roof if you're trying to do anything.
I would say the other thing with the gable roof one is, since the building is down in a hole from Boeburg, and if you do a gable, the walls are gonna be shorter, and it's gonna feel like you're gonna drive by and be looking at a roof. That kind of feel. So that was one of our concerns with it. I mean, I think it looks quite nice, but I think that's one of the just presence issues for that one, where the shed brings you up, so you're actually having a taller wall along Boeburg.
But you're single-story using more... but that's a single-story option to do that.
Yeah, single-story, that's correct.
Yeah.
And you're getting clear-story lighting, so you're getting natural light coming in that's sustainable.
Okay.
So this is not the one that you said was the most...
Parapet.
The parapet's there.
The parapet wall was that one.
Yeah.
But there's no two-story option on that?
No, there is.
There is. This right down here is the two-story.
Oh, they're on the old ride, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just to point out, these are all interchangeable. You could do every building in a different roof shape, or I mean, it's really... it's really independent.
I mean, we could do the parapet for the administration building and then do a shed roof for the...
Solar?
Put solar on.
Yes, for the warehouse, so.
So these are also...
Mix and match.
You get more effective solar if you're shedded toward the south?
Right. Yeah. Like 20, 23 degrees, something like that, for the slope to maximize the panels, that kind of thing. So, again, it's interchangeable, and part of our costing exercise we're gonna do is like, what's the impact of the different roof shapes? Because you need a different structure for each one of them, which lends me...
Well, I was just gonna say, on the solar panels, why would it matter? Wouldn't you just elevate?
We could put solar panels in any of the shapes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do it as a mount.
Or you would just change the angle of the...
Right.
That's right.
Of the solar panels, so the angle of the roof is really...
We do...
That is correct.
Tons of buildings like this, parapet buildings that have solar panels on them, just... you build a frame that...
Raise the backside of the solar panel to the 23 and 1/2 degrees.
Right. So that was roof options, and then just looking at structural systems, just to give you an idea of the things we're looking at here, one would be wood frame construction, also looking at pre-engineered metal, and then tilt-up concrete. So three different ways to build, and it may be that there is a combination of one building being tilt-up and one being pre-engineered makes the most sense. So that's again part of our costing exercise, but wanted to give you an idea of the areas that we're looking at in terms of the construction.
This is also gonna be either a primary or backup emergency operations center?
Yes.
So that will be factored into your evaluation.
That is correct.
Correct. So being done as a category for seismic buildings at the highest level. So... and some of the building systems lend themselves better to heavier structure, so that's things we can come back and talk about as well. And then the final was just looking at different materials for the exterior. This example of using cement board products, whether it's horizontal lap or big panels, that's the kind of material we could use on the building. Concrete masonry units, so concrete block, and you can get in all kinds of different colors and textures, often used in facilities like this. Metal buildings, and again, you can do a lot of interesting things with texture and color on those buildings. And then the fourth one, the tilt-up concrete, which again, there's a lot of interesting things we can do with that in terms of the patterns and color and that sort of thing.
We'll go to the next page if you want to.
You betcha.
There we go.
Okay.
So that was kind of our presentation there, that we have this quick little fly-through to get up and running. Go ahead, do it. And so, as we mentioned before, so we're going to be refining the preferred option after we have a chance to kind of price out some of these variations, and then we'll develop a cost estimate, and then we will work with a consultant to help us put together a financing plan, and then we'll be back to talk about that, so.
Sounds good. Glad to hear we're moving forward on this. It was a council goal that was set at our goal-setting session to move this project forward, and it's been some years since we recognized the need, and I'm sure that staff is gonna be... see us moving forward also.
Very true.
Excellent.
All right, so we're just gonna leave you with a quick little fly-through of potential. So this was what it would look like from a street side as you approached it? Is it this two-story one?
Yes.
Yeah.
From the public parking angle as you enter there. And overall, this is from the Old Castle site if you were looking back at the overall property. And this is from the staff parking area, looking at the overall of the exterior of the building.
In the two-story version?
Yes. And that's essentially the... from the shop building as you would approach the building, and you can see the advantage of that lower level being on the same elevation while the site steps up there on the left, and you get a good street presence on the opposite side of the building.
All right.
So that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
So we're electrifying our bus fleet. We may be possibly electrifying other parts of our fleet over time, so is providing location for that eventuality on this site something that we're thinking about?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Excellent question, but yes. Talk about that.
And I presume this is... I mean, if we go forward with this, it also means a remodel of the police thing.
Yes, of the existing building, yes.
But we haven't started on what that might look like, or...
No, there were some sketches done as part of the 2015 Facility Master Plan, but I would assume that when it came time that they would look at it a little closer.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, next up, Aurora Airport Master Plan. Mr. Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. There's Mark out there.
There's Mark here.
So we did talk about this in executive session a little bit, but we have a board meeting coming up, ODA, Oregon Aviation Board Meeting coming up at the end of September, and written comments are required by September 24th. Ms. Jacobson also has something she's gonna be talking to you about in regular session, but at this point, what we're asking is what council direction you would like to give us in terms of submitting testimony to the Oregon Aviation Board on their... at their meeting in Salem on the... I think it's the 26th. And I will say, for the past, we have been consistent in, you know, preserving the city's right to, you know, comment on such things as public transparency, fair and open process. We've been consistent in how we've communicated that, so if you did want to just continue along those lines, we don't really need to create anything new. We could submit what we've already submitted in the past, and so that would preserve your right to do additional things in the future if you so decide. But it's really up to the council.
Well, some of us has been involved in this for a long time, and asking to be a participant in the process has been a theme throughout that. And apparently, if I understand correctly, and result... as a result of our last letter to the new director asking that we be included in the process, they ignored us and did not notify of this... notify of us of this upcoming event. So it doesn't sound like they've taken to heart in any way our consistent request to be part of the process. Is that accurate?
It's my understanding that we didn't receive direct notice, that we heard it through a third party.
So consistency with past position, I think, is something that's important to me. Counsel will have to tell us what you all think about, but the extent to which the city has not been privy to the intergovernmental agreements that were done, has been excluded in other ways, to me, does not seem like it follows the rules about how master plans are to be done, and I find that problematic. The ambiguity of first being told that, no, they did not adopt the master plan, and now they saying, oh, yeah, we did, which is a concern. So I would like to see us work to maintain standing and advocate for our citizens to have a chance to be part of a process. Counsel, what's your feeling? Counsel, what's your feeling? Counsel Raccoon?
I would agree that, especially when we've requested to be notified, that, you know, keep following up with that message, and underscore that that is truly important to us. So I think that's, if we follow up with a letter, or what, to communicate that, I think that's important. I think it's important for us to be involved in this, so that we can continue to be active and have a voice going into the future, as more information, you know, is continuing to come out on this subject. So I would agree that it's important for us to take a stance that would allow us to continue to have the opportunity to have a voice going into the future.
Counsel Lee. Yes, and I would agree as well. That's what we have asked from the beginning for many years. I don't know how many years, 10 years at least, 15 years, is to be a part of the process, for it to be transparent, and it has been a struggle constantly to receive notice, and which is why we decided to have a forum, because it wasn't an open process. But where, if that was a master plan, it should have been part of the master planning thing. There should have been public hearings, and we felt like we needed to give our citizens and the community an opportunity to speak. So I feel strongly that we need to maintain our position, maintain our ability to speak in the future on this. And I will remind the council, as I have stated before, I am a member of the Friends of French Prairie, and so I've been working with them for a while on many of these issues.
Counsel West?
I think that there's a consensus that I can understand, though we need to want to be notified in cloaks proximity, and I think it's fair to ask, if you're having these hearings or what's going on, to not feel like you're hearing from a third party. I can understand that, but I also think there's another side to this story that was also loudly voiced when we had those public hearings, and by all...
Public.
I'm sorry, not public hearing, but we had the people come here and testify what their opinions were and their feelings about the Aurora Airport, just before I came onto the council. And in 2012, there were PAC meetings, open houses, we participated in those. We may not like the seat of the table we were given, or don't think we were given a seat of the table, but our voices were, for many years now, expressed and put out there. And so, I think also that in 2012, there was, during that meeting where they adopted the master plan, they went back and looked at the minutes meeting, and they took a vote, and in that vote, they adopted a master plan, if you look at the meeting minutes. So, and I think the meeting in Sun River and in Salem later this month will show that we're, they believe that, the ODA believes that the master plan's been adopted, and we are now looking to do Atlantis issues and cross some Ts and dot some Is. So I think if we're going to pick a side as a city, which we really technically haven't done yet, that there's a lot more constituents that should be weighing in on this, and the business community should have an opportunity to be surveyed and heard, and I think that that's the step that we would take before jumping out and necessarily picking a side. And that's kind of where I come from it now, is I don't think that we necessarily should jump in right away and pick a side. I understand that, that's kind of what we're looking as a council, is to do this motion on behalf of, to join up with Friends of French Prairie, but I think there's a large number of other constituents within the city that would like to have their voices heard and don't necessarily, we know if they want us to take that direction.
So I wanted to stipulate that what I'm talking about has nothing to do with joining any group. So on, I don't know what the exact date was, we submitted a letter, and we had two points that have been consistent since I've gotten here, and perhaps even before I was here. I've been here nine years, but our issues haven't changed, and we've had two positions. One, to develop an inclusive IGA with all the relevant local jurisdictions, including Clackamas County and Wilsonville, and state agencies on the coordination of transportation growth management in the Aurora State Airport area. So that would include local governments such as Aurora, Wilsonville, and Clackamas, and Marion Counties. And second to that would be including state agencies, such as the Department of Aviation and the Department of Transportation. And the second point we've made consistently is to develop a new Aurora State Airport master plan that complies with state law requiring transparent public process. Master plan must address key issues that include surface transportation, infrastructure, and economic living impacts and mitigation. That's basically a summary of the letter that you had me sign, and I believe the mayor has consistently stated. The other issue is that we don't get to dictate the timeline on this. We're told that we have to submit testimony. So we were told that we have until Tuesday, September 24th. That's when the hearing is, Tuesday, September 24th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., to submit our public comments. So that's what I'm asking, is do you want me to submit additional information, including everything we have on record, including the public forum that we had, which is a transcript of what everything was said, but I think captured both sides pretty adequately, in my opinion. But we could certainly do more after, if the council desires to. And then, our written comments would be due Friday, October 4th, so that would be after the actual hearing. And then, the final decision to be made by the Aviation Board will be held on Halloween, Thursday, October 31st, in Sun River, Oregon. So I'm not sure how many city folks are going to be going to that, perhaps other groups, but I'm not aware of anyone on council or staff that'll be attending that meeting. So what we have before us is, do you want to submit testimony or not? That's all I'm asking. Now, Ms. Jacobson has a different issue she's going to talk to you about in the regular session. So if you want to submit testimony, is what I read in the two points adequate to just basically restate for council, and then include all the issues that we've already identified and any additional written testimony we've received? Or do you want me to go beyond that?
I would just, just correction or clarification. You said Department of Aviation when you were saying of agencies to be included, when I think you intended to say Department of Agriculture. ODOT and the Department of...
I only read what Mark gave me, so if it says Aviation...
On the front, it's, you know, the missing ones are, obviously, ODA has...
I was reading from the third page.
I see.
So, yeah, we'll make sure...
Obviously, ODA is there.
Yes.
It's the other...
Department of Ag.
ODA, Department of Ag.
So, there is considerable contention, I guess, over the approach that has been used, and what the content of the proposals that some of the advocates of urban expansion of the airport are asking to do. I think that we should maintain our standing, and if that, as I understand what we're being told, is that if we file a motion that preserves our right to advance testimony, and we have not yet agreed what that testimony would be, and we don't have to agree right now on whether to submit testimony or not submit testimony.
Yeah, you kind of, we kind of need to decide. I mean, I think under mayor's business or city manager's business, if you agree with those two points, then you should direct us to, staff to write a letter to be signed by the mayor, reiterating what our stance is on the expansion of the airport, because that's the decision that they're going to be making, as to whether or not they correctly approve that master, that 2012 master plan. So to preserve standing on that issue, we need to present some kind of written testimony.
Written testimony, okay. All right, and so we need to make a motion in our open meeting and reach some kind of a conclusion, so here in work session, we just need to understand as well as we can what the options are, what the choices are, and what the implications of those choices are.
I have a question.
Counsel West?
So when we, because the law is foreign to me a little bit, not my expertise, when we submit a testimony, and we say, here's what we have in our public records, here's what that forum brought out, here's what our position has always been as a city, which has been, you know, what Brian read, that isn't necessarily taking a position, that's just presenting information for the record. Am I correct? Unless, when, but to maintain your standing, within the, you actually have to take a position or a side. Am I understanding that correctly?
There's a difference between submitting testimony and litigation. So alls we're doing is reiterating our position from the beginning, which is, the master plan was developed improperly, it excluded parties that should have been included, and it needs to be looked at again. So that's a different issue than whether or not they approved the master plan, and then you want to litigate whether or not they did those things that we said they didn't do.
Okay.
So just to clarify a little bit more, so, sorry. If you don't submit testimony on the 24th, and then the decision is made on Halloween, that is going to be a decision that may or may not be appealed to Luba. If you don't submit testimony, then you don't have standing to appeal. So if you want standing to appeal one way or the other, no matter what the decision is, because we don't know what it's going to be, then you will have had to have submitted testimony into the record. Just by virtue of submitting testimony into the record doesn't mean you're going to appeal a decision to Luba. It just gives you the right to, if you want, if you decide it's the thing you need to do. If you don't submit testimony, then you don't have the right to go to the next step. So that's with the September letter. The other thing we've talked about is, Friends of French Prairie has already filed a notice of appeal to Luba, having to deal with how the master plan was or was not approved in the past, and they have contacted the city about whether or not the city would intervene in that brief. And so that's something we can talk about more. I think there are people here, perhaps, that are going to be addressing you during citizen comments, and then we'll talk later in session about, would you want to do that other step? I think the easiest, the most straightforward step that we're talking about now is just submitting testimony, expressing the city's concerns as outlined there.
Consistent.
Yeah, consistent with the past statements. And then, whether or not you ever do anything more than submit that letter is not something you have to decide now. What you will have to decide pretty quickly is whether or not you want to move to intervene in the French Prairie brief, and again, that's just the first step. You just file your motion in order to make the timeframes. Doesn't mean you still, you have to go forward if you get additional information that makes you feel differently, and so that's what we'll talk a little bit more about later. But I think the letter is pretty straightforward. Does that hit?
That I understand, yeah. I understand. Thank you.
Other discussion, clarification?
So that is under mayor's business. You'll have to provide direction of that.
Yep, yep. All right. Want to move on to the next?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item up is business retention and expansion results from Mr. Vance.
Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager. I'm going to walk you through our business retention expansion results that we gather over the summer, and give you a quick reminder on the overview of the approach of this project. So first of all, what is business retention expansion? It's the idea of growing your own business growth, and establishing contact, and understanding your business needs, challenges, opportunities, and connecting businesses to resources to promote growth and expansion locally. So this is ongoing, and this work has happened since we've, as long as there's been an Economic Development Manager here, and this is a more structured effort where we tracked our outreach and came back to council to report it. Here's some of the resources that typically add value to the business community. Workforce development has been the number-one issue right now, so workforce training and hiring, site selection, so oftentimes, city staff have a sense of what's coming online, what real estate might be available. The state has a popular export assistance grant, where the state will provide $5,000 to $10,000 for marketing and trade show assistance, transit assistance, partnering with SMART to address transit needs, different types of metro, regional, state grants, and then local incentives. Why business retention expansion? This helps promote and reinforce Wilsonville as the best location to grow your business. Ultimately, its business development is going to help grow our tax base, it allows to pay for city services and amenities. Research shows that big recruitments and relocations are down, and that the majority of growth comes from expansion of existing firms. Currently, we have no vacant land, and we have very little vacant land in Wilsonville until Coffee Creek is built out, so it's a good focus also leading up to an economic downturn, is trying to promote local growth in your community. Also, info and intel gathered from business retention expansion can help inform coordination among city departments and help lead to a better customer experience. So for this targeted effort, we had a very specific group of businesses we were trying to meet with. We were trying to meet with our largest employers, manufacturers, and traded sector, and what we're calling gazelles, which is high-growth potential businesses. So we get a list from the county of businesses that have year-over-year growth in sales, employees, and so this was a very focused list of about 60 priority businesses that we were starting with. We planned a lot of this in the spring, and then we spent the summer meeting with businesses and putting out a business survey in June. So there's basically two channels through this program. There's a survey, and then one-on-one confidential interviews with traded sector businesses. We had a marketing campaign to supplement this effort, so we had new handouts, newsletters that went out, we have leave-behind coffee mugs, and we really rebranded the selling points of Wilsonville. So the fact that there's room to grow here, that we have expansion land in Coffee Creek that will be enabled next year when Garden Acres Road is complete, we have incentives here through our TIF Zone program, we have workforce training programs right in our backyard with Oregon Tech and Clackamas Community College, and our transit is really a differentiator that resonates with our business community. It's a lower payroll tax, it's a customizable, nimble transit program, 10 minutes to anywhere in town, fare-free to the end user. So all of that, even though we all know these programs, sometimes the employers aren't as in tune with some of the benefits of doing business in Wilsonville. Economic development is really a team sport, so these are some of the partners that we work with, both the counties, local Wilsonville Chamber of Commerce, regional groups like Greater Portland Inc., our higher-ed workforce training groups like Clackamas Community College and Oregon Tech, and also internal departments. Here's some of the metrics that we've been tracking over time, so the number of jobs created or maintained through this effort, new space that will be leased out through expansions, new investment in the community, also perception of Wilsonville as a business-friendly So the initial results for the survey, we had 37 respondents, and then through the face-to-face interviews, we had, that was 16 traded sector participants, and out of those meetings, there were 20 follow-ups with different types of assistance that we provided, from workforce training, connections to workforce training programs, to grants, to transit support. And from the face-to-face interviews, there's 10 current or potential expansions that were shared with me from local employers. For the survey, we mostly hit our target audience. Over 40% of the respondents were in manufacturing, and then about 20% were in business professional services. A few folks from retail participated. It was an open survey, and it was promoted via the Boons Ferry Messenger and open channels, so some retail and small business did participate as well. In terms of size of employers that participated, over 50% of businesses had more than 20 employees. 81% of the businesses have been operating in Wilsonville for more than 10 years, so we hit a lot of legacy businesses. So this is an exciting stat. 58% of folks that took the survey said they planned to expand in Wilsonville, and with that expansion, they said that they would invest between $500,000 and $20 million in Wilsonville, and the median response is around $500,000. And some employees said they'd create up to 75 new employees, and the median response for new employee growth is about 20 new employees. So for barriers to growth, the top three perceived barriers to growth in Wilsonville were availability of employees. So because the labor pool is so tight, hiring is a challenge right now, so there's a lot of effort. There's... There's, one of the strategies is just promoting internally, and so there's a lot of interest in leadership training programs to equip employees with management skills that may have the technical expertise. Transportation access and I-5 was the number two, listed very to success, and then skill level preparation of employees was the third most popular response. For the question, what are the top three advantages in Wilsonville? So interestingly, I-5 was reported as the top advantage and the top disadvantage. So people said I-5, our location between Portland and Salem, proximity to clients. And then the second most popular response was high-quality services and amenities and access to skilled workforce. The top three disadvantages to doing business in Wilsonville, I-5 congestion, businesses said this is driving away customers and employees, it's very challenging during rush hour, as we all know, Boones Bridge South is challenging, high cost of living and taxes was the second most popular response, and then lack of skilled workforce. So interestingly, two of the top advantages and disadvantages are the same, I-5 and access to workforce. What could be done to improve local business conditions, solve traffic conditions was the most popular response. A lot of the businesses gave feedback about wanting better lunch options, so less chains, more independent local lunch options, better quality restaurants, and then we heard desire to improve the permitting process. Interaction with the city, they scored us from 1 to 10. About a third gave the city a 10, 63% gave the city between a 7 and a 10, and then about a third scored 5 or below. So the average score is about 8 or 9. So what would be the most helpful assistance that the city could help provide? Employee training was the top response, and that's not surprising. The second was workforce transit, and the third was expansion relocation. And then for the one-on-one interviews with businesses, we met with 16 traded sector businesses, and there's 20 follow-ups that came out of that. Workforce training, hiring was the top follow-up request. And so typically, Clackamas Community College has customizable training programs right now to focus on leadership and professional development and managerial skills. So that was a very popular program for our local employers. Site selection is another area we can add value, so we typically have a sense of which, what land might become available, which spaces are going to be vacant in the coming months. So that's an area, if employers are interested in staying in Wilsonville, we can typically give them a sense of where they could, what sites they could look at. Folks were very interested in learning more about SMART and the programs that they have, including the carpooling program. And then there's some employers that had city issues with permitting or something that was stuck in the queue that I was able to expedite and help them contact a city employee. Sustainability is also a very popular topic right now, so reuse, recycling, that came up a few times. And so out of these conversations, 50, over 50% of these employers said that they would like to expand at some point or are currently assessing an expansion in Wilsonville. Some interesting themes to come out of the face-to-face interviews, some of the largest employers were not responsive. So we found that the high-growth and midsize employers, that we call the gazelles, were most receptive to city assistance. And I don't think that's surprising. I think historically, sometimes it's been challenging to get in touch with some of our large employers. Hiring and training remains the top need for employers right now. Due to a tight labor market, firms are promoting internally and seeking out leadership training programs, and likely we have those resources right here in our backyard. A lot of employers said that Salem is a, the Salem workforce is very attracted to Wilsonville because of the higher wages up here, so a lot of employers are starting to pull more from the south of the river and the Woodburn Salem markets. Some manufacturers did voice a need for 24-hour transit service, so this did come up from about four or five employers that said they have an early shift and a graveyard shift that we currently don't, can't accommodate. So I've shared that with the SMART Transit Department, and they're going to schedule some follow-up meetings to see if the carpooling program might meet their needs. And I know this has come up before. Workforce, so both from the survey and from the interviews, we heard that folks want different lunch options, different range of restaurant options in Wilsonville. And everyone, most everyone said that Wilsonville is a desirable location to do business, and folks do want to stay here and expand in Wilsonville. There's just not a lot of land options, so there's not a lot of vacant, there's not a lot of vacant build space or vacant land until Coffee Creek is ready to go. Some other interesting insights that came up is I had more than probably two or three employers say they would like to explore a hiring relationship with Coffee Creek Correctional Facility, either working with inmates that are on their way out or folks that are currently in the facility for hiring. So that was, that was something I haven't heard before that was new. And then another issue that I've heard is that for entry-level production facility positions that drug, a lot of folks are failing drug testing, and so that's been a challenge hiring for some of the entry-level warehouse positions is drug testing. And that sums up my presentation.
Well, lots of lots of activity, more so than you might intuit, just, you know, driving around town. I think about the availability of land questions, seems to me like we have more availability here than many other communities around the metro area, so even though they're saying it's tight here, isn't it tighter a lot of other places?
That's true. It's tight, there's not really land anywhere right now. But in terms of industrial land, we don't have any large or medium-sized vacant lots at this point. Our remaining I-5 adjacent land has been acquired in the last one or two years.
Until Coffee Creek opens up.
Yeah, until Coffee Creek opens up.
So the Coffee Creek being open, I mean, there's no one point at which that's, I mean, the road will be open?
There are some, I think there's some activity going out there. I think there's some land aggregation going on right now, at least the preliminary steps.
Which, you know, when we decided to move forward with building Garden Acres, it was with the hope that that would indicate a clear commitment to making that happen on the city side.
I do think we're seeing some activity out there.
We are, yeah. There's a developer that's currently aggregating, said they've aggregated 30 acres that we're actually meeting with tomorrow.
Oh, good, good. Counselor West?
Any interest in the TIF program for the buildings, the tax incentive programs to kind of, that you, we talked about earlier in the year, kind of that innovative way to entice more of, more industry into Wilsonville and more business? And I just want to make a point, between this session and last session, I had a conversation with a couple people, and transit came up twice about how special our transit SMART system is. I don't even know these people, and I was in Portland, and they're just like, oh my gosh, you live in Wilsonville, and your transit system is such a model. So I even, I hear that even what you're testifying in this survey. I think it's a real asset we have. And then the other thing that I always kind of perked my interest is the tax incentive issue, and I don't, how is that going and anybody interested in it?
So folks were interested in it, but it only applies to three buildings, and those buildings are, have all developed at this point, or they all have a tenant. So we're actually, we want to come back to council probably in October or November with a proposal on how to reevaluate the TIF Zone program. One idea we've been throwing around is potentially having it be site agnostic as opposed to site-specific. So what if we had a framework for the TIF Zone program that we could essentially switch on when the right development comes? So we'd have the criteria set, and then if there was a development in the pipeline, it would be a two- to three-month process, working with council to approve this incentive if it was the right project. So that's, that's an idea we're throwing around, but the TIF Zone is set to expire this year, so we're going to come back with our urban renewal consultant in the next month or so to get direction on how to proceed.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Rockwell?
Just quickly. It's exciting to hear about the potential growth too, and expansion in the city, so it's, thank you for sharing the information, that's exciting. And I was encouraged to see the response rate from the survey. And I wondered, because we were working with a consultant, right, in setting up the original framework, did they give us a sense of response rate to anticipate, or were they also encouraged by the response rate that we received?
They were encouraged, and I think this is, my understanding, the first time that we've done this. And so it's traditionally hard to access the business community, folks are busy, it's hard to get their attention, and in my role, I'm not in a regulatory capacity as much. I'm trying to add value and build trust and try to gather intel from the business community. I think it was a good, considering we had a very targeted group of people that we were trying to hit, I do think it was a good participation rate. I think when you look at the number in itself, it doesn't seem that high, 37 businesses.
But 62% response. That, that's, you know, I mean, we're working with a small N, but 62% response rate for any survey? Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it was a good, good starting point.
Yeah, okay.
And is there intent to have this be any kind of an ongoing program as far as the surveys, or, you know, what is the ongoing?
So I think in terms of next steps, we want to put together a report that we can share publicly on some of these results and talk about how we've considered them and addressed them. And then I've talked with the chamber on a Phase Two and how we can continue this outreach and just build on this model of meeting with local businesses and trying to promote continued expansion.
I think it's just a constant kind of thing.
It's a constant thing. I think this is just a focused way of tracking it and reporting it, but this work is, yeah, it's ongoing.
It's ongoing.
Counselor Leahy?
A thought that maybe I'm not really supposed to talk about, but, Toowallatin. And we have, you know, you can't help but notice, whether you're looking at businesses in Washington County or businesses in Clackamas County, that Wilsonville is a significant peak for Clackamas County, and Toowallatin is a significant one for Washington County. But if you put the Toowallatin and Wilsonville together, we are a giant piece in the region, in the whole Portland metro. But we never get lumped together or looked at as a, as an industrial cluster, because we're in two different county, two different cities and two different counties, and yet it seems to me that most businesses don't really see the distinction the way, the way all of the data distributes it and makes both of them look smaller. I know we are supposed to be competing, both county side and city side, but, so my question for you is, is there a role for cooperation with your counterpart at Toowallatin? Or do we, are we always in this position, even though we are a huge cluster of the Southwest corridor?
To answer your first question, the Washington County views that area as a contiguous industrial, the Washington County Southern Industrial Area. But my experience is that the region works together very collaboratively and not competitively, in that we view growth as holistic regional growth, and I think over time, businesses have gone back and forth between Wilsonville and Toowallatin, and it balances out and the region still wins.
They do. I mean, and certainly we have been trying for years to be cooperative in the development of Basalt on the planning side, but I didn't know how much that was also true in the business development side or the economic development side.
We do look, work very closely with all of our peers. I think other regions around the country, there's more of a competitive nature, and there's more poaching, and you don't see any of that in the Portland region.
That's good to hear.
One of the topics that's kind of related to that, Counselor, is former Mayor Ogden and I, when we were in more intensive conversations along the Basalt Creek line, had several major conversations about the extent to which what you say is true, and that combined, this is really quite an economic center. And in western Washington County, you know, you have several designated regional centers, you know, Tannisborne and others, that they have moved forward with. Why shouldn't we be a designated regional center by metro, combining Toowallatin and Wilsonville, and put us in a position to be perhaps more visible at the regional level? Would there be enough advantage to that to merit going down that road? There are some pros and cons, but, you know, it has not been something that has really been on the forefront of anybody's itinerary that I know of, and we, if we wanted to do that, we would have to push it. I don't know what your economic development perception of that would be.
So what's the proposal? Would it be a different classification?
It's a different metro regional designation. It'd be more, probably more of a Chris Namsoo question.
From my standpoint, I don't think there's a lack of visibility. I think all the developer community is well aware of Wilsonville and the benefits of Wilsonville. I think there's clear market demand to be here. I was just on the Neop tour of industrial lands last week that featured this, the Toowallatin and Wilsonville market, and went through Parkway Woods. So in my mind, I don't think there's a, there's a lack of interest or awareness about what we're doing down here.
The regional center designation, and Mr. Namsoo might be able to fill in some, but my understanding is it could potentially put us in line for regional funding of some ways to move the regional center forward that we otherwise are not going to be in line for.
It helps on the funding side.
Okay. I can look into that.
Or transit even.
Yeah.
Well, there again, we're separated by another separation.
So, we ready to talk Kitakata?
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Erica?
All right, well, I'm not here very often, but I'm Erica Baylor. I'm the Recreation Coordinator for the Parks and Rec Department. And I'm here tonight with an exciting opportunity. So I'm representing the Wilsonville Sister City Association, and they are looking to become an official Wilsonville City Board. So I'm here to kind of give you a big overview of kind of what they do and where they've been, and then just some kind of key things that are coming up in the future and the timing that kind of makes this ideal now. So in doing a little research, I came across a huge accordion file with a lot of old newspaper clippings about the sister city, hence my giant scrapbook. If you ever get a minute, feel free to borrow it from my desk. But this is the original signing of the agreement with Kitakata, and it's just 1988. So we just celebrated last August our 30th anniversary, and this is Mayor Bill Stark and Mayor Iainu from Kitakata, Japan. And I'm just going to briefly, this was just in order to deepen the understanding and friendship between the two cities. So this was always kind of a promise to one another to keep the relationship strong, to keep talking about topics like education and culture and economy. It was always the sense from the beginning that it was city to city. And before I move on, I also just want to say, the association has been run by a group of super passionate, super dedicated volunteers for the last 30 years, and they've been doing a great job, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you for all that they've done. So moving forward, these are some wonderful pictures that I came across in kind of my research. Down in the left, so we have a peace post at our library that's still here, and they also have one in Kitakata, Japan, which is shown in the bottom picture. These other pictures here are from the first delegation in the late 80s. So you'll see in the bottom right, Counselor Eldon Edwards is there welcoming the first delegation here in 1989. So a big part of this is education. So Kitakata sent the first delegation of students in Wilson, to Wilsonville in the summer of 1989. We then sent the first delegation of students to Kitakata in the summer of 1994. These exchanges are really important, not, because you can't get an experience like this on a tourist vacation, right? These are like homestays, they're 10 days long or more, students are really getting immersed kind of in the culture, they're going within the schools, they're seeing how our public education system works, they're visiting our libraries, their sightseeing, and they're all kind of accompanied by the volunteers of the Wilsonville Sister City Association. So the group- So the group now, the association now, places these students with local host families in town and coordinates a 10-day-long itinerary that includes things like the school visits and the sightseeing activities. And in addition to that, our high school also sends students to Kitakata every other summer as well. So there's both students coming here and going to Kitakata as well. And in your council packets, you have, yeah, there's Charlotte in the bottom right-hand corner. In your packets, you also have a sample itinerary of the kinds of trips that they put together. And coming from a place where part of my job is to plan events, it's no small feat to plan something like this. It takes a lot of coordination, just with buses and businesses and timing and volunteers. So it's a huge undertaking. So coming up, I'm going to Japan in two weeks on October 1st. So we've been invited to go. Their association is paying for it, so they're paying for myself and five other Wilsonville Sister Association members to go and visit Kitakata. We'll be talking about several different topics. They're going to show us kind of their culture, and we'll be immersed in some of the things that they're famous for there in Kitakata. Some other things that are, that make this kind of ideal, so why now? Why, why are they coming now to ask to become an official board? So I have a quick note here from past President Bev Shaw that I'm going to read for you. "I believe and have always believed that the sister city relationship should be affiliated with the city, regardless of current nonprofit status. In recent years, there have been a few things that make the timing seem ideal. Mayor Nap's trip to Kitakata, greater city involvement, and loss of nonprofit status. I think the challenges we have had with nonprofit paperwork, fundraising, getting minutes written in a timely manner, et cetera, are examples that the organization relies on a handful of volunteers. This small band of volunteers has successfully kept the relationship afloat for the past 30 years, which is awesome. However, I'm a firm believer in leveraging the skill set of each team member, and I think the organization would benefit from greater ownership and involvement from the city staff. It's been run by a small group of volunteers for 30 years, and in recent years, the association has appreciated the increased support and involvement from the city. The current organizational structure, which relies on a handful of volunteers, is not sustainable." So that's kind of where they're coming from. They're just looking for more city involvement. I've been going to their monthly meetings, but I think, I am definitely 100, 100% in agreement that I think it would benefit from more city involvement. So Kitakata has also been chose, chosen to be an Olympic rowing training site, so the U.S. Olympic team is there right now. And they were specifically chosen because of their relationship with Wilsonville. We will also be receiving a delegation of students in November, excuse me, late October to early November, with a welcoming party on Saturday, October 26th, that the council is definitely invited to. So we will be hosting that in here in one of our parks. And yeah, so next steps, we basically are just putting this on your plate right now for you to review, and we'll be back, assuming at a council work session soon to kind of talk next steps. So that's what I have for you. If there's any questions.
Thank you very much. We are a little tight on time, but we should probably read the draft agreement that's in the packet. And if anyone has questions, can direct it to staff, you know, or to you, or if there's any suggestions about things that we think should be included that might have been overlooked or anything like that, now would be the time to put that forward, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. I'm sure you'll have a great trip.
Yes.
All right. And Dial-A-Ride, briefly, if we could, please, sorry to hold you on the end of the, end of the agenda here.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you for having us. Good evening. My name's Nicole Hendricks. I'm the Transit Management Analyst for SMART. And I am with Kate Johnson, who is our Chair for our Dial-A-Ride Steering Committee that we have, and John Weisenthal, Weisenthal?
Rob.
Oh, Rob Weisenthal, sorry. Not really. And we're here today to talk about, the committee has been meeting since November of 2018 to go over our demand response system called Dial-A-Ride. And we recently did some outreach, and they are going to share some results from that. So we're going to skip through a couple slides, but our main goal was to reach audiences that are current Dial-A-Ride customers, new future Dial-A-Ride customers, older adults, those who have a disability. So we're just going to move along to the outreach portion of how we got the word out and where we were at.
We had a robust cross-section. I thought we were going to go to the next slide.
Okay.
And we had 157 survey results. As you'll see on the slide, the highest top destination was medical services, 66%. Shopping came in at 40%. Recreation friends, movies, et cetera, came at 17, 18%. We took a whole meeting, there's about 20 of us in our task force that gave rise to all of the information that came up, like an entire, what, two hours? And the service hours came up as mid-morning to afternoon, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Most interest in Tuesday and Wednesday. The value was out-of-town service valued at higher price point, willing to wait 20 minutes to pick up to a group. The demographic of the respondents, let's see, about 81% were 65 and older, 18% were between 30 and 65.
Sorry, I do want to mention, the steering committee met and developed the survey on their own, so it was a very collaborative process, and we worked through and created those questions. And then they went out, the steering members went out into their own prospective communities, Spring Ridge, Creekside, and did their own outreach. And I think that's why we got such a good response rate for such few places of going to, we collected a really good response rate, because they knew the people that they were talking to.
Right. So it's really, I'll have you talk in just a second. So as far as lessons learned, I'm just cutting to the, the end here. There's, in general, more outreach to Charbonneau outside of Spring Ridge. We did have some scheduling conflicts, there was, you know, that led to that. Having committee members show up and bringing peers along with them to table and return some of the higher survey results, having staff member there to answer more technical questions could be more helpful. Tables where people are already there, you know, things like conventions, concerts, classes, engagement. And then as far as like survey questions, we, we had a long discussion about phrasing the questions so that they're easy to understand. You know, a lot of times when people are walking by, it's like, you know, what are we, what are we talking about? And so that was something we walked away with. And being, being aware of what Dial-A-Ride is, there's a lot of lost in translation of like, how is that different from just the regular transfer, you know, transit system?
It's just a smart bus to them. It doesn't matter if it's a route or calling in.
Right. So, and there were some questions around Sunday, Sunday services, ranking response took some, too much time. So Rob, do you want to add anything to?
I'm set. I like how you made it quick.
We made it, we were just like rushing through it.
But I do want to hit on again, it was a really collaborative process, and the committee met and did a really great job of getting those outreach scheduled and creating the survey and getting the responses. There we are. And so next steps, they're going to work on a recommendation, so they're going to combine the, the results from the outreach and the topics we've been discussing for the last several months to kind of come to a recommendation for what they want, what we should do to, to improve efficiency and serve more people for Dial-A-Ride. So they'll come back in November to give you that update.
We're looking forward to that.
Is that one of your committee members in the back there?
Yeah. So we also have Mike and Priscilla.
Two of them.
Hi, Mike.
And Priscilla.
All right. Sounds good. I'm glad to hear you're engaged in all of that moving forward and get a better picture of what we should do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right. We'll close out the exact, our work session here at 6:57.
Well done.
And meet downstairs for our first, our first full council session in a while.